I think I can call this meeting to an end. For all of those who can't, please raise your eyes and declare the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Bishop will release the pledge.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Brittany, roll call, Bill, please.
Chair.
Here.
Robert Issa.
Here.
Mike Stroud.
Here.
Dan Edgell.
Here.
John Wood.
President.
And Tom Marjanis.
Here. Awesome, thank you. Minutes of June 21st, 2022. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of June 21st, 2022, as Brittany.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Next is a public address to the board. This is the time when a public may address the board on any item listed on the meeting agenda or on any issue or matter of the town. If you intend on addressing the board at this time, we ask that you do the following: Please identify yourself by name, address, or the company, institution you represent. The public address to the board segment will last no longer than 30 minutes. Please make your comments concise and try not to repeat statements made by others. Please address your comments to the board chair. Discussion or debate on any issue may not take place at this time. The chair that designates may answer questions on procedural matters. Please be cordial and respectful of others. If anyone wishes to be recognized when the board discusses an agenda, then please make that request at this time. Board chair agree with this request, and again, address comments to the board chair and be concise. We are meeting in person and making this meeting available via Zoom for the convenience of the public. Since we are meeting in person, we will not be responsible for any technical difficulties, so if you would like to be sure of participating, please try to attend in person. Anyone wishing to address the board tonight?
Hi, Rich Hall, 164 Green Ridge Drive, Chawton. I was going to talk about electricity rates, just for five minutes. I had a phone call, like I'm sure many of us have had phone calls over the last few weeks, and someone offered me 29 cents a kilowatt hour and said that would save me money. Just wanted to make sure everyone's aware, the town has a program which is basically at 9 cents, .603, and that price is fixed to January 24th. So if you get phone calls or you're welcome to switch your supplier, but you may want to check out the town's rate, which you can opt in and out at any time at no charge. And at the moment, this rate is very hard to beat. I did speak to the town manager today, Tom, and we're going to try and update some of the information on the town website so that it's a little bit clearer to residents, but that's all I have to say on that.
Yeah, apologies, I didn't get back to them. I'm glad you and Tom, yeah, I'm glad you and Tom connected. And Tom, is that information accurate? I saw it on our website, posted August 2nd, 2022, and that's the program you're referring to, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's accurate, right, as far as?
Yes, that we give quarterly reports.
We do, okay. All right. Great, excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Rich Hall.
Anyone else to address the board this evening? Hello.
How are you?
Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, okay. Employment, appointment ratifications. James Dourier Jr. is permanent sergeant effective September 27th, 2022. Mr. Erickson.
I'm pleased to bring this appointment forward to you. I would ask that Chief Stroud introduce her candidate for permanent sergeant.
Yeah, come on up, Sergeant.
I can tell you he's probably praying for a call right now harder than he's ever done before. I will just introduce James really quickly. He has a bachelor degree in criminal justice and, I cut that a minute later, he has a bachelor degree in criminal justice. He's been with us full-time since 2016. He's been our canine handler since 2017. He is a stop sticks instructor. He's our pistol rifle shotgun less lethal instructor. He's also been our union president, we still get along, and our association president as well. And he's going to be going to field training officer school in November, so he's going to be one of our training officers as well. And he gets really embarrassed when I say this, but a couple things about Sergeant Dourier is he has absolute immense respect from the officers in our department, and I couldn't be happier to have him in this position because he does such a good job between both of us, talking to the officers and having that great rapport. And I will say he's probably one of the best report writers I've ever seen, especially in our department, and he's just a huge value. So I'm very excited at this promotion for Sergeant Dourier. Well deserved.
Great, excellent. Sergeant, any words?
Somebody called my phone.
Oh, well, you're really on the spot now, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
We haven't voted yet, James.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure. I'm making a motion to appoint to permanent Sergeant James Dourier effective, um, September 27th, 2022.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Erickson, committee appointments.
I will turn this segment over to Alyssa Machina, who takes care of our committee, lists membership, and has arranged these appointment ratifications.
Yes, we are currently seeking residents to join the ADA Committee. Berkshire Regional Day and Commission has come out with an ADA self-advancement plan for the town buildings and such, so we're trying to update the members that have been on there for years, so, anyway. Lynn Clements, I reached out to because I know with disabilities, with the dogs that she works with, I thought she would be a great asset to the ADA Committee, so I would like to recommend her appointment.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
Sure thing. I make the motion to appoint Lynn Clements to the ADA Committee effective September 27th, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Mr. Boyle.
Couldn't help but notice that we're, in addition to on the verge of ratifying the appointment of Lynn Clements, that we're losing two members. So how many members are we down to now, Alyssa?
That one Lynn is appointed, there'll be three active members.
And out of a total of what?
Five.
All right, so you got enough to?
Still need two.
Yeah, but you got enough to conduct business with it to all show up.
Yes.
Great, great work. We'll be on the lookout for two more members for you.
Yes, thank you.
Am I allowed to say anything?
Sure. You're next, pick one of us.
So my name is Dr. Anthony Barone, this is my wife, Andrea, and we joined the community about a year and four months ago. We have a 501(c)(3) that we have for Rejoice Children's Services. We're going to be working with children, seniors, and adults with disabilities. I have the paperwork in the car actually for the committee. I could bring it in. We would love to serve on the committee. We just rented space in the Union Block Building. We're on the second floor, and we had received a donation from a manufacturer in Minnesota of a soft paper bar chamber which helps people with disabilities, everyone really. For oxygen therapy, we provide chiropractic care. My wife's an emotional inflammation specialist. She works with teas and healthy creams and things that she makes, and she also does therapeutic muscle bodywork to help remove stress and tension.
Awesome.
We have spoken to the police in Pittsfield, we went through their rounds. We're hoping to get in front of the fire department here and the police department here to just, you know, present what we do. Prior to coming to Dalton, Massachusetts, we were boots on the ground in Atlantic City, New Jersey, which was a very difficult area. We worked with the homeless there very closely. So we've been involved in ministry work since 2018. We've been funding that ourselves. Now that we are a 501(c)(3), we're ready to take donations, and we appreciate any kind of help that the town can offer us as far as referrals and financial assistance if possible.
Great, thank you, thank you. Well, let's, okay, so the motion is second for to ratify the appointment of Lynn Clements. And Lynn, your name is L-Y-N, right? One N?
Um, legally, I'm doing one.
Okay, okay. So there's no further discussion on the appointment?
I do.
Mr. Stroud.
I just, you couldn't ask for a better advocate and a member of this committee than Lynn, so I just want to throw that out.
I second that, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Hear none? We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you very much, Lynn, appreciate it. And then I'll hand it to you, if you want to take the two volunteers now, or do you want to, I don't know, we have to review paperwork or anything?
I have it in the car, I can bring it in.
It's all I really need is their address.
It should probably be on the agenda before.
Okay, great, yeah, okay. Good back.
Put it on next agenda.
Put it on the agenda?
We'll put it on next agenda.
Okay, so 283 Park Avenue.
Okay. So what we're going to do is Alyssa's going to grab the paperwork and put it on the next agenda, so then we have a formal, you know, get it formally published and everything else like that. Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Erickson, rescind Nancy Pearson's ADA Committee appointment.
Yes, Alyssa also has some information about this update.
Okay, Alyssa.
Nancy Pearson has been on the committee for quite a while, but I haven't received any contact back from her when I've tried reaching out. I did call and I spoke with her daughter, who informed me she was not in the best health, so she no longer, no longer be a part of anything.
Okay. Kevin, motion?
I make a motion to rescind Nancy Pearson's ADA Committee appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Just want to say thank you to Nancy for her volunteer work on the ADA Committee to this date, and I appreciate her time and effort. Any other discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Again, thank you, Nancy. And Alyssa, for Debra, Debra Boyle.
She moved out of Dalton about five years ago. Someone told me to the clerk's office. Again, I haven't received any contact back from her. I tried using the phone number we had, nothing back.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Let's see. Make a motion to rescind Debra Horst's ADA Committee appointment.
Is there a second? Motion is second, any discussion? Again, just thanking Debra for her work in the past there as well, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, Alyssa, for your work. Acceptance of the Police Department's Municipal Road Safety Program grant for $19,192.04.
Yes, you have a memo from Chief Stroud in front of you about that. This is a, I believe, a new program, a road safety program, perhaps, no? Yeah, please.
So this is the municipal road safety grant. We had gotten it in the past several years ago. We haven't gotten it probably in the last five years. I will give Becky Whitaker a ton of credit because she put a ton of work in on this as well. So some of the things that we applied for is because we get a lot of pedestrian crosswalk complaints with crosswalk violations, so we're going to have a bike rodeo in the spring. We're going to focus on some bike safety, and we're going to have handouts of helmets. That's part of the grant, is going to pay for helmets and educational materials, reflective vests. So we're going to probably do that here in the late spring of '23. We have funding for monitoring and enforcing crosswalk violations, and we have extra patrols starting in December, and they're focused directive patrols, so we applied specifically for grant funding for specific things. December will be impaired driving, March is distracted driving, April is also distracted driving, May is seatbelt enforcement. We're going to be working on a bot crash drill with the fire department at our high school for educational purposes. June will be speed enforcement, July will be speed enforcement, and next August will be impaired operations. So that's the specific items we have funding for. I won't get any questions, but that's what we wrote, and that's what we're receiving.
Is there a motion?
Sure. Make a motion to accept the $19,192.04 in state funding from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Secretary's Office of Grants and Research.
Is there a second? Motion is second, any further discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And thank you, Becky, for the great work there, I really appreciate it, thank you so much. Number nine is a special town meeting for Wednesday, October 19th, 7:00 PM, at Waukeah Regional High School. We're going to walk through approving the early voting hours and sign the warrant. Mr. Erickson.
Yes, the first item is to approve the early voting hours, something which is now a regular part of any election based on new law. So we have, we've given you a list from Saturday, October 22nd, through Thursday, November 3rd. These are mostly 9:00 to 4:30 PM. On Saturday, it will just be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We are required to be open during, for four hours minimum during the weekend. So that's, that's, again, well, on Saturday, October 29th, it'll actually be 9:00 to 4:00 PM. So four hours on the 22nd, but seven hours on October 29th, those Saturdays. We will not be open on Sundays for any early voting. We have these on the website, and the last day to register to vote for the special town meeting is Saturday, October 8th. They'll be open 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the last day to register to vote in the general election coming up is Saturday, October 29th, from 9:00 to 5:00 PM. So that's registering to vote for the special town meeting and general election.
And just so there's clarity for the folks at home, as I kind of read the agenda, it just looks like early voting hours related to the special town meeting, but they're separate, it's general election. So the early voting hours that were listed is just general election, early voting hours. And then for the last day to register for the special town meeting is on October 8th, from 9:00 to 5:00. And the special town meeting is on October 19th, and that's to address the items that are on the warrant that we'll speak about next. And the last day to register to vote in the general election is Saturday, October 29th. So that's a lot of activity in our town clerk's office.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, no, I just, sorry about the agenda.
I think you should mention that the special town meeting is on Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, great, Mr. Boyle, thank you. And that, yeah, the special town meeting is Wednesday, October 19th, so we typically don't have it on Wednesdays, but this is, so.
Due to scheduling in the town clerk's office, multiple events, it's much easier for us to have it on Wednesday, October 19th.
Perfect. And so tonight, we're going to, if there's a motion to approve the early voting hours for the general election.
So long.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the early voting hours for the general election? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Boyle, I mean, Mr. Bishop.
Thomas, is this going to be put on the website or published in place?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we put it on the website.
It's already there, yes.
Not yet.
Oh, it is?
It's in the web.
Okay. Now that it's approved.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to the warrant.
Yes, there are four items on the special town meeting warrant for October 19th, Wednesday, October 19th, at 7:00 PM, at Waukeah Regional High School. The first is an article to see whether the town will approve $900,000 for repairing or replacing the Waukeah Regional High School track. There's been quite some talk of this recently. All of the towns have to approve this for it to move forward. If a town does not hold a special town meeting, it will be considered approved as per the district bylaws, but we are having a special town meeting, and we'll be voting on this to see whether or not voters approve. This will just be a majority vote, even though it has to do with borrowing, because it is a change of use within that borrowing, it's not additional borrowing. So the project came in $2 million under budget, and the district is proposing to use 900, up to $900,000 of that money for repairing or replacing the track. That's the first item on the special town meeting warrant.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Bishop.
I think it'd be a good idea to explain to people when they see this $900,000 and they'll say, wow. But as I understand, if we go ahead and do this, the tax rate's only going to go up by 10 cents, is that correct?
I think it was 10 cents every 400,000, is what I was.
So this would be, depending on how much they actually spend of this $900,000, it would be more like 20 cents.
Okay, I think that needs to get out there because people are going to see this now and go, whoa.
Well, I think along that same line, clarification is not 900,000 for the town of Dalton.
Oh, yes, of course, thank you. The town of Dalton would be probably roughly half.
About 500, yeah.
That.
So it was around 10 cents.
So, so yes, it would be more in the order of 10 cents, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, while we're in the vein, this is particularly on the agenda, does this board have a plan or an option to make a recommendation to the town meeting? It was unclear when Mr. Stroud made his motion last week, that, oh, let's have a town meeting, let everybody have their, voice their opinion, but what about our opinion as a board and our recommendation? Don't we traditionally make recommendations out of all articles that are on warrants?
I don't recall if we standardly done that. I don't recall if we did it last town meeting.
The people know where we stood.
Pleasure of the board, I guess. Then we'll do a free charter. We haven't done that in the past, though. I don't recall. In recent history. I don't recall. Why would we start now? That's one thing, pleasure of the board. Yeah. Certain special thing, special article. My suggestion of this particular article is that the motion that we passed last time is to bring it to the town for their vote on this, and not necessarily our position, but the town's position. I think that the agenda says sign the warrant, so. Yeah, so I don't think we can. I think that if we want to have that, or somebody wants to bring it up for items for future agendas, we could do that at a future, the next meeting. And to be that, and bring that forward if we want. I think right now, this is to sign the warrant.
Yeah.
But I don't disagree with Mr. Boyle or anybody, I think it's, if we want to do that, that's fine, so we should bring that up for items for future agendas.
Okay.
I just feel as it, the town voters out there, they watch us closely, and I think they're looking for leadership on this very controversial article. And not so much that support for the track is an issue, we all support that, it's just the way it was done.
Which would be a discussion for the next, for items for future agendas.
Yeah.
I agree. It's important that. Okay, so when we get to the future agendas, we'll add that to our list, and we'll add it to the next agenda. How's that sound?
So, the next meeting would be the only meeting between that meeting and the special town, if I'm being correct? It's about October?
I believe so.
It's the Tuesday, the 11th, the day after Columbus Day is the next.
Columbus Day?
The day after.
So we don't even have a vote, a meeting scheduled for that week? If there's a holiday? That's interesting.
No, no, we have it for Tuesday, October 11th.
It's Tuesday, October 11th, because Monday falls on, Monday is a holiday. So the meeting's on a Tuesday.
Okay. Wasn't aware of that, thanks. What a better year than Monday.
The other question for Article 1, Tom, is this the language from the school district?
This is the language from town council. The school district referred us to, referred all the towns to their own town councils for language.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions on Article 1? Article 2.
Article 2 is, at the request of the select board, to transfer some money to the police outside detail. The proposal is for that to come from the general stabilization account. We don't have free cash certified yet, so general stabilization is the next best place for it to come from at this point. And the proposal that I will have brought and will be bringing to the finance committee from the select board is for $10,000. That will likely be a subject of discussion within the finance committee, but that's, I think that the final motion will be up to the finance committee.
It's interesting how it got to $10,000, although it was requested, it was $5,000. Twice they requested it, so I don't know, we should be adding 5,000 and making it 10,000, or stick to the original 5,000? I think we should hear what's necessary for the continuing processing of our paycheck.
Yes, well, we did give out the Excel sheet showing what the excess balances were last time. It is, it is possible, based on past spending, that the demand on the fund could exceed what is available in the fund by more than $5,000 at some time. If the intent is to ensure that, that the fund never be in a position of being short, then a larger amount of money would be, would be called for.
Does that make sense? Just that it was requested at one point in time, it just somehow fell between cracks years ago.
Yes, and I had been going on the understanding that that had been a generally agreed figure previously, and then there was an additional request, so that's what I have brought forward to the finance committee.
That's what it takes, I'm fine with that.
Again, the Excel sheet shows the details, and I don't know how representative those are. Clearly, there were lots of road projects in 2019, and lots of details were subscribed, and there were many times when the payment was not available from the vendors back into the fund so that the officers could be paid the following week.
In addition, there's, it's a much younger police force, and they're more willing to go out there and work and stand in the hot sun, dusted, et cetera, et cetera. Years ago, we had kind of an aging police force, and a lot of police haven't, wouldn't do details. But now we have a more energized police department, and, hey, they're young and they're after the bucks.
Sure. Okay. And I think the finance committee talked about this at their last meeting, I don't know what the outcome was, but.
They did, it was just a discussion, there was not a vote. They are planning to vote at their next meeting, which will be the second Wednesday in October, the day after the next select vote.
Article 3? If there's no other questions on Article 2?
Article 3 is proposing to transfer funds from the sewer stabilization account to the capital project account in order to pay part of the money for doing all of the work that was identified in the sewer system evaluation, evaluation study, which will stop unnecessary inflow and infiltration into the sewer system, which ends up costing us more money when it gets to Pittsfield.
Yeah, this was a discussion last meeting where a suggestion was made that we don't use all of the ARPA dollars in this.
Yes.
In this repair, but we look at sewer stabilization as a portion, and then ARPA as a portion, so that's what this is.
And if they were split equally, it would be about $360,000 for each. That would also leave us with just under $500,000 in unallocated ARPA funds, which I believe the board indicated would be well spent in more paving projects.
Any questions on Article 3? Article 4?
Article 4, very simple. Article Four, very simple, two unpaid bills, very low amounts from the previous fiscal year.
Nine tenths vote required, what was in detail there?
At, for a special town meeting to approve bills from a prior year, it is a nine tenths vote required.
Interesting, okay. Any questions on Article Four? Here are none, if there's no other questions on any of the articles, I'll take a motion to accept the warrant as presented.
Motion to accept the warrant as presented.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion on the warrant? Here are none, on the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries. And thank you for that work, Mr. Dr. Sonnen.
We're, we're the one.
Right here.
Yes, if you could sign that, our town clerk and assistant town clerk would be overjoyed.
Could you please make sure it's signed with black pen? Thank you.
If anyone needs a blue pen, I have one. Do they have to be in blue or black?
Black.
Black, sorry.
Black, I'll never hear the end of it, black.
Black. I think that was from the days when photocopiers didn't pick up blue very well.
They always told blue was the legal, the correct legal.
I usually sign in blue because it shows that it's not a copy. That's only for the original.
And then, I'm sorry to, this strategic appointment for our, our assistant town clerk, we already took a vote on that, right? And I just need to sign it.
Heather, yeah, she was appointed.
You signed it, yeah, I think. Sure as you're right, yeah. Well, I thought you. This is a paper.
Oh, a paper?
Yeah.
Number 10, consideration and vote of Walker, Walker Brook Preliminary Cost Estimates for Alternative Construction Options.
Yes, and I have to apologize, I did not get GZA present at this meeting to present the two alternatives.
Next, next meeting maybe?
I, I can't see actually acting on this now. I apologize for that.
And motion to table until our next meeting?
Motion to table until our next meeting.
Sure, second, motion is second, any further discussion?
If anyone does have any questions on it, based on what you've been given, please let me know and I can have them focus on answers to those questions during their presentation.
This has reflected the, our point presentation we saw that, ninety about a month ago, two months ago.
It does, these are preliminary cost estimates based on the two, two preferred options.
So let's, we can make a note for our next meeting and if GCA is not available for some conflict, then maybe we can squeeze it out before, give us like a special, would be in the floor, a special town meeting kind of thing, if everybody's available for that.
I, I will just point out that there's about a million dollars difference between the alternative two and alternative three, so those are the high and the low options.
Which are, tell, look at this picture here, which is two and which is three.
We're in the motion to, right? The table.
Yeah. Well, here's this, action two, right here.
The, the, the proposed culvert option three is daylighting the channel.
There's none of the big, all right, I'm gonna hold, there's a motion to table.
It does not appear on the, on figure, oh, I'm sorry, it appears in figure three.
So figure three, where it says daylight, open channel, that should actually also note option three, Tom?
Yes. So option three is the least expensive.
All right, let's all just individually study this between now and the next meeting and Alyssa, you're working magic on the schedule in there, and then if there's any questions in the meantime, send individual questions to Tom and Tom can cycle those back to the board, I guess.
Yeah. Again, so, so there's about a twenty percent difference between the daylighting option and the more, and the most expensive culvert option. That's, that's the order of magnitude we're talking about, difference between five and, and six million dollars essentially.
Any, any further discussion, we have a motion to the table until our next meeting or second on that motion? Any other discussion or? Okay, all in favor of the table?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, extensions, that motion carries. Up the end Dalton Division Road, we got the water and sewer.
Yes, we did receive, this is just a brief, brief update, we did receive confirmation from Mass DOT that the state in, in the case that we have now would not contribute to either water or sewer funding, the, the case in which they might contribute would be if the proposed construction created a difference in elevation that required resetting of the pipes.
And thanks for that, Ms. Moore, that was the request here to investigate that.
Yep. Now we found out, did we?
Yeah. All right, number, any questions on that? Number 11. Here in, number 12, Tom, any other update?
Thank you. I, along with my executive assistant, have moved our offices into the basement of the old bank building. I call my new office the cave and invite you to visit and find out why. Alyssa is in the outer cave. We'll have the usual select board information down there, we, we do have that down there. And at this point, we, we barely moved our essentials in, we're still picking up some things from, from the other building, but we're, we're pretty well moved in. So, and that's a note to everyone who might be watching or listening, if you want to see Alyssa or me, you have to now go to the bank building, so, just to be clear about that.
So what we do, just walk in, take a left, and you find a doorway and go down to the solid.
Yeah.
Okay. Make sure.
Walk in, turn left, go downstairs, that's good, and people on the first floor will, will point it out to you if you.
No elevator.
Because you can't find it, there is no elevator, happy to come up and meet with people on the first floor. Yeah, speaking of the need for an ADA committee.
I was just out to post that very question.
Yeah.
I guess I'll just use the mobility though.
Well, and, yeah, and, and we're, we're all happy to come upstairs to, to meet with people.
No, no, it's Dalton, it's out.
Any other car beeping out there? Is it my?
Cam broke in.
Oh, Cam did, okay.
As you got a hint of earlier, my executive assistant is also moving forward with reconstituting the ADA committee. We have received a draft self-evaluation and transition plan and need to review it before final approval. Then we can use it to inform improvements to not only town hall, but all other town facilities. This will also allow us to finish the final chapter in the open space and recreation plan, as we've been waiting for ADA information to finalize that. The town, through a licensed auctioneer, will be auctioning off 32 River Street. The third, the second from the right in the row houses where River Street turns the corner into River Street Extension. It is being advertised as a shell and the auction is October 20th at noon. The site will be open at 10 o'clock for site visits if anyone is interested in bidding on that property. You can get further information on the web or from our town treasurer.
Tom, we, bring this up, it might be appropriate time. We're talking about River Street when the snow flies, what are we doing?
The plan is for us to maintain River Street Extension.
So while we're maintaining it, we have to cross somebody else's private property?
We do.
Do we have permission?
Regarding staff changes, Heather Durand has left her position as assessor's clerk and we're in the process of hiring a replacement. We can also welcome Patty Melee Nichols, the new assistant town clerk. She's still in the town hall now, if you want to stop by and say hello, that would be great. I think Michelle's last day is.
Thursday.
Thursday, so you can also say goodbye to Michelle if you'd like to do that. As I say here, Michelle will be working with her for a short while before heading for the hills, happily heading for the hills. I attended a presentation at the stationary factory to tour the top floor hosted by our redevelopment authority chaired by John Boyle, where Lympho Divas is setting up shop. It was a great chance to see their mass works grant in action and after some prodding, Otis Elevator is starting to follow up on the repairs needed to get the staff elevator running as opposed to the freight elevator. I also took the opportunity to speak with Representatives Smitty Pignatelli and Paul Mark about Dalton's general government bond bill items and asked Reverend, Representative Pignatelli to relay the advocacy to the lieutenant governor, and he's about to meet with her to discuss that bill. And I was just in communication with him again today about that and Bud is gonna be getting him some more detailed information about the repairs needed to the highway garage and possible expenses related to the transfer station, which could also be funded through that bill. The senior center's programming has been busy and full. I'll note especially that they're having a flu clinic on October 7th, starting at 1:00 PM. Slots are limited, so please sign up soon. I've been working with Tom Irwin on a more coordinated approach to the work of several committees, all focused on sustainability, and he's in touch with staff and committee members to make sure everyone is in the loop. The work, at least in part, parallels our master plan work, so I anticipate having a member of the green committee serving as an at least unofficial liaison to the planning board as that work develops. Speaking of coordination, I'd like to try holding a meeting that was very popular in Conway, a meeting primarily of committee chairs and department heads, though open to all, for committees and departments to share where they have, what they have been doing and are planning for the near future. Everyone would get three minutes to say what they've done over the last year, what they're working on now, and what they hope to work on over the next year, with some opportunity for cross-talk. I found it not only inspiring, but also an excellent opportunity to see where the work of various committees might inform others or even dovetail. I'm thinking of Thursday, November 3rd as the date and appreciate any suggestions. This would be entirely voluntary, but a good chance to talk about everyone's work.
Great idea. Great. I don't know what the other word means, something, just my gut reaction, a great idea. I love to see that coordination. Any way, any way I can help or support, happy to do so.
Thanks, I will need someone to attend from the select board.
I'll be happy to attend.
Thank you, that's, that's it.
If I can't, because if it's during the day or something, if I can't juggle it, I'm sure somebody else can step in too.
Oh, I'm, it, it would be me, I'm planning for a second. And that's it.
That's it? Great, great report as always, any questions for our town manager?
Yeah, just one thing, how are we progressing with our sale of the Biden, Biden property, not the Biden property, the Biden property?
I have not received a report from the appraiser yet, I will check and have something for you at the next meeting.
Have you, have the, had an assessor, appraiser on your contract or?
Yes.
Or agreement?
Yes.
And he is gonna do it?
Oh, yes.
You know, I'd like to, we could set a date at some point in time without the consent of the appraiser, but I think it's in our best interest to have this before the snow flies. I don't know where, if you end about October, first week in November?
Is the assessment by that time?
I, I think it's possible. I am not sure of all of the steps that have to be taken, so I, I can't, I can't give a date, but I, I get your desire to have it move forward expeditiously.
Thank you. Any other questions? Tom, I got, I got two just for follow-ups, any response from the city of Pittsville and Gulf Road yet? The mayor, the letter that we sent to the mayor?
No, there has not been. I planned to reach out to the mayor about that.
If I can help, let me know, happy to.
Sure.
Make contact. And the other one that was on the list was, we sent a letter to the superintendent, I believe, of the lights at Wakona being on at night.
I'm sorry?
The Wakona High School lights on at night, we're kind of inquiring about that through Dan's request, and we sent a letter to Superintendent Blake Davis, I believe, about why they have the lights on at night at the high school.
We're gonna have to chat about that later.
Okay. Okay. But any response from that letter or?
No.
Okay. All right, fair enough, leave, leave it there, that's okay. Yeah, no, no worries, just curious, it was just on the list. Any other questions?
I have.
Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, Tom, in the paper, I need to clarify something for you. In the last couple of months, there's been, the town of Dalton selling land for a dollar, just like two or three different places. Number one, who sells that land? I mean, who gives the authority from the town to sell that land for a dollar? When, and I have a problem with that because the person up here a stone toe away, we can put them through the wringer to have them buy that land from Dalton, so.
Oh, what piece of property was that?
It's in the legal ads, I mean, that's the real estate ads. It was, in the last couple of months, you go back and look and there's the town of Dalton sold three, three different people, three different parcels for a dollar. I'm not sure if they're big parcels or little sidewalk or whatever, but it doesn't really say how much, but it says a dollar. Yeah, it kind of bothers me when we, we put these other people through the wringer there.
Do you still copy those public moment at all?
Yeah, it should be on, it's just on the Burtson real estate, they're all like pulsing the eagle, that looking eagle.
How long ago was that about?
The last couple of months there, it was three of them.
Sounds kind of weird.
Yeah, that's what I've done.
Yeah, it doesn't.
We sold allegedly, it's still been legalized, the property on the Deuce Street, under doubt.
Yeah, but I mean, if we're some.
One doubt.
Yeah. We gotta be consistent about this stuff.
Yeah, I, it, that does not sound right to me. I, I can understand that properties were sold in the town of Dalton for a dollar, but I don't believe the town has sold any land for a long time.
Okay, I'll look, I'll, I'll, I'll find it and send it to you, I'll send it to the board.
There are, there are often, often, property can change, especially between an estate and an heir for a dollar. And I can imagine that happening within the town of Dalton, but I don't believe the town has sold land since I've been here.
The Deuce Street. We thought it on Deuce Street and that was it.
Oh, and that was a sale, yes, I'm sorry, so there was that one.
Just that one, yeah.
Yeah, the, the town would have to hold a, a town meeting. Yeah, the, um, the town would have to hold a, a town meeting to sell property.
All right, I'll, I'll do some research.
Okay.
All right.
Send it to everybody.
Um, any other? Uh, I'm just gonna anticipate 48 hours before the meeting, and we, we're missing future agenda items on this agenda, so I'll just throw it under that.
I know, it's actually...
Yeah, that's what I did. Um, one is Mr. Boyle's request of the Wakona Regional High School's school track. Quick discussion, vote on support. And then, um, Mr. Boyle, should we bring back River Street Extension, have a conversation about that, or do you think it's, it's okay the way it is now?
River Street?
Yeah.
I don't think this, uh, right at all, because now, by doing this, as we pointed out before, it's gonna open up all these other parcels that were, uh, and driveways that were, uh, deemed to be driveways and not city streets. With the same, uh, to the same issue.
I think if, you, it's bringing up, bringing this up again, I think we go back to the town meeting because it was, it was declined or, or was not supported by the town to accept it as a town road.
Yes, it was.
No, it was.
It was.
Yes.
No, it wasn't to accept it as a town road, it was to...
Provide maintenance.
Provide maintenance.
Provide maintenance, okay, so that was accepted.
Right, and then as far as any of the other ones, that, and a couple of people have reached out to me, I told them to join in with the petition for that other thing. So if they didn't join in, then...
Okay, so that was accepted.
I mean, I, I, maybe we sent a letter to Ruron asking for permission to cover us to cross private property, but I, other than that, I think it's a dead issue.
Okay. And then, if we can just add the Gulf Road letter and then the Wakona Regional High School's school lights letter. Anything else on future agendas? And Alyssa, you sent me the list, but can you rattle off the list of the ones we already have on the list?
Yep.
I just forgot to bring it with me.
There's, uh, highway update, stuff from rule, or town service to residents. Uh, provisioning sessions for the future of Town Hall and feasibility study. Uh, Barden property update, Gulf Road update, and detailed presentation of street scheme, which I hope will be done in November.
November, okay. Anything missing about this, gentlemen? Here are none? Any, any remarks to the Select Board?
I got one, Joe.
Mr. Stroh.
Thursday and Friday, Dalton Division Road and Washington Mountain Road will start paving, um, see if alternative routes will be out there for, like I said, Thursday and Friday, Dalton Division Road and Washington Mountain Road.
Thank you. Any other remarks to the Select Board? Here are none? Uh, announcements, annual car permits, bags, stickers, and recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station and on the town's website. Town offices update, the town manager and executive assistant have moved to the old Berkshire Bank basement at 488 Main Street. The health agent, building inspector, and town planner have moved to the Kittredge House at 444 Main Street. Town Dalton currently has the following job opportunities, a highway mechanic, a building and grounds assistant, and assessor's clerk. If interested, please visit the town's website or call the town manager's office for more information. There are numerous committees and boards and vacancies. Please see the town website for more information or reach out to the town manager's office. The next meeting is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center, with an option for remote participation, and with that, have a motion to adjourn.
Oh.
For second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Good night, Dalton. Motion, uh, to adjourn.